Okay, the light is on and we are ready. Good evening, everyone. I will call the meeting to order. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, could we get a roll call, please?
Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
Johnson.
Here.
Callum.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
And Sykes and Callum are excused this evening. So, alright, well, we have some wonderful staff here this evening, all dressed up in their uniforms, and this is a great special presentation we have for Police Department's Life Saving Award. So Chief Latanzio and Captain Heinrich, and now we have Captain Lyles. So, congratulations, Captain Lyles.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. I do want to recognize Brad Lyles. We promoted him to captain last week because Captain Eric Carter is going to be retiring at the end of November, so he gives us a couple of months of cross-training.
Okay.
I would like to ask Officer Ponder and Officer Estes to come up, please. On June 29th at 05:30 hours, Officers Ponder and Estes responded to the Line Street Bridge regarding a possible suicide jumper. It was reported a female was on the bridge leaning over and appeared to be getting ready to jump. Officer Estes arrived and contacted a witness who had been talking to the female. Officer Ponder saw the opportunity to attempt verbal contact with the female as she was standing on the outside railing of the bridge, holding onto the rail with her arms behind her. As Officer Ponder talked with the female, she told him that her intent was to jump from the bridge and end her life. Officer Ponder was able to inch his way closer as she was crying but still communicating with him. Officer Estes was able to approach as well from the other side as the female was focused on Officer Ponder. Officer Ponder used his communication skills to engage her and eventually get close enough to grab her left arm. Simultaneously, Officer Estes was able to grab her by the right arm. Both officers were able to lift the female back over the railing and to safety. The female protested that she wanted to kill herself and that they had stopped her from doing that. Due to the heroic actions of Officer Estes and Officer Ponder, the female was not able to jump from the bridge. Based on the height of the bridge and the lack of water beneath the area, it is likely she would have died. The decision to act during this incident was courageous and saved a person's life. Congratulations.
Wow. Well, I remember reading about that in the paper and how scary just even, and it's sad to see that somebody was in that state of mind, but, boy, I tell you, we are so proud of our Albany Police Department and the training that you have and ended up, you know, saving a person and being able to prevent that from happening. And it's probably something that kind of sticks in your mind for a long time, too, you know, of being under that circumstance, but we are so proud of all of you and we want to thank you so much for your service. We are very fortunate in Albany to have the police department staff that we have and very fortunate, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a smaller agenda here this evening, and with that, I am going to open the public hearing at 7:20 PM, and I've got a script to read here, but we're going to combine both these public hearings, on the Gary Street one and the Denver Street one. So, on tonight's agenda is a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding a street vacation for the northernmost 350 feet of Denver Street, south of the Willamette River and Bowman Park, as described in Planning File VC 0217, and the street vacation for the northernmost 282 feet of Gary Street, south of Willamette River, north of vacated Lynn Avenue, east of Bowman Park, as described in Planning File VC 0117. I call to order the public hearing, and that was at 7:20 PM. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the city clerk. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? And do any members wish to report a site visit? And do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Okay. Does anyone wish to challenge the participation of any council member in this hearing and decision? Okay. For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards. Staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. At this time, I call for the staff report from Gordon Stephens Meyer.
All right, these two street vacations actually came from sewer project. We planned to build a wet-weather sewer pump station here at the, near the intersection of Water Avenue and Montgomery Street, and this area where we want to build the sewer pump station is part of Monteith River Park, and federal funds were used to develop the park back in the 90s, and those federal funds had some strings attached, and if we turn any of this land that we used the funds on into something other than a park, then we need to replace that land elsewhere. So, this is the right place we, for us to build a sewer pump station, so we started looking for replacement area, and we went about a mile east to Bowman Park, and right next to Bowman Park is the right-of-way for Gary Street. And what I've got hashed out here is the right-of-way, we're talking about vacating. When Gary Street gets vacated, half of the right-of-way will go to the west property, the city park, and half would go to the east property, which is currently owned by Willamette River View Holdings LLC. The site is empty, there's nothing there. In order to get a transfer area, we actually have to buy something. We can't, we couldn't use the western half of the street, which we're getting for nothing with the street vacation. We have to buy the property from someone, and we had an appraiser appraise this property, this piece right here, and the site of the sewer pump station, and they found them to be of roughly equal value. We checked with the Federal Parks folks, and they agreed that this was a trade that would satisfy their needs, and so we approached the people of Willamette River View Holdings, and they were agreeable to give us a quitclaim deed for what they normally would have gotten through this vacation process for this piece. They'll also, they will end up acquiring this half of the right-of-way up here, so that'll become part of their property, assuming this all goes through. This shows what's in the area that we're vacating. It's actually full of sewer lines and storm drainage lines, so we're going to need to retain an easement over this part of this right-of-way in order to protect the lines that we've got in there, so the property that these folks are going to acquire will be encumbered by an easement that we're going to retain. You can see here now a larger map of Bowman Park. When we were looking at the land that's encumbered by the federal funds, we found that all of Bowman Park up to the Gary Street right-of-way was encumbered, including this piece of Denver Street right-of-way, which actually technically shouldn't have been encumbered because it's right-of-way, it wasn't city property, couldn't technically be a city park, but nobody bothered to turn it into property back when the park was developed. And when we're done with this process, we're going to need to send a new map showing the federally funded encumbered property to the Federal Parks people, so we thought while we're here, let's go ahead and vacate Denver Street as well. It's, as you can see, it's currently got a parking lot on it for the park, so we've been using it as a park for quite a long time. And it's a little zoom-in area showing the Denver Street area that's going to be vacated. It has a sewer line crossing it diagonally. That is our large river, riverfront interceptor, it's like a 42-inch sewer main. That's the only utility in it. We didn't feel the need to retain an easement over that since we're going to be the owner of the entire property. We own all this, we own all that, we'll own this then, and we don't have any easements for our own property, so we didn't feel the need to retain an easement on this one. Okay. And now I'll go through the review criteria. There are five review criteria, and I'll talk about both Denver and Gary after I go through each criteria. So the, these are the criteria that we need to address when trying to vacate right-of-way. The first is, requested vacation is consistent with relative comprehensive plan policies in any street plan, city transportation, or public facility plan. And neither Gary nor Denver Street appear in our transportation plan. We haven't, never had any plan to turn those areas into actual streets. Like I said, there are sewer and storm drain lines in this part of Gary Street, so they do appear in our storm drain and sewer plans, so we're going to need to retain an easement over, over this right-of-way when we vacate it for utilities. So, the only condition that matches, to meet this criteria, is that we retain that easement on Gary Street, none is required on Denver. The second criteria is that the requested vacation will not have a negative effect on access between public rights-of-way or to existing properties, potential lots, public facilities, or utilities. And getting rid of this, this right-of-way won't take away access from any of the neighboring properties, and we, we do have access to all the utilities in the area, so this condition or criterion is met without any conditions for both streets. The third criterion is that the requested vacation will not have a negative effect on traffic circulation or emergency service protection. Once again, there's no streets here, everyone's got access to Denver Street or Gary Street from another place, so there's no reason to retain these rights-of-way, so that third criteria is met for both streets. The fourth criteria is that the portion of the right-of-way that is to be vacated will be brought into compliance with code requirements such as landscaping, driveway access, and reconstruction of access for fire safety. Denver Street is in the condition it's going to be in, it's already basically part of the park, there's no plans to do anything to it, it's been landscaped the way we want it, and so nothing needs to happen there. The same goes for Gary Street. This small piece in the upper right corner that's going to go to the property to the east, currently looks like the rest of Bowman Park. When they develop, they'll have an opportunity to change that, but for now, it's in compliance with the Development Code, so that fourth criteria is met. The fifth criteria is that the public interest present and future will be served by approval of the proposed vacation, and I've concluded that we're doing this in order to get our sewer pump station built, to clean up this area here with federally funded encumbered map, so the public interest is served by doing these two vacations. So, I guess that's the end of my staff report.
Okay. Any councils have questions? No? Okay, all right. Thank you, Gordon. And, well, let's see, we are the, don't need the testimony from the applicant, we are the applicant, so now I'll see if there's any public testimony. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the street vacation hearing? Okay, all right, not seeing anyone. And any other questions? Council has anything? All right, with that, I declare the public hearing closed at 7:31 PM. Council, you have actually two ordinances, so one's on page 14, and the, I mean, on page four, and the other one's 13. Would you like Sean to read, do the first reading?
Yes.
Yes, please. Okay.
An ordinance vacating a portion of the Gary Street right-of-way north of Lynn Avenue in Albany, Oregon, adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance be read a second time and title only. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance vacating a portion of the Gary Street right-of-way north of Lynn Avenue in Albany, Oregon, adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion for adoption, the ordinance. Second?
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And now the next ordinance on page 13, first reading.
An ordinance vacating a portion of the Denver Street right-of-way within Bowman Park in Albany, Oregon, adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance be read a second time and title only. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance vacating a portion of the Denver Street right-of-way within Bowman Park in Albany, Oregon, adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion for adoption, the ordinance. Second?
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, Gordon did it. All right, thank you.
Actually, all that is.
Yeah. So, a quasi-judicial decision of the City Council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after, after the decision becomes final, and that pertains to both hearings. Okay, that, we are done with the public hearings. Next is business from the public. Anyone here that would like to bring an item forward? Okay, all right, not seeing anyone. Next is another ordinance, and this one is the Human Relations Commission. This is on page 21, and council, this is what we had the joint meeting with the Human Relations Commission last week, and this was the agreeable amongst all the council for the changes to the ordinance, so would you like Sean to do the first reading?
Yes.
Yes, dear.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC 2.25, Albany Human Relations Commission.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance be read a second time and title only. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC 2.25, Albany Human Relations Commission.
Make a motion for adoption, the ordinance.
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay, is there a second? Second? Okay, yes, Dick.
The next last pair, the last sentence, says the duties of the Human Relations Commission may be revised at any time after public notice by a resolution. Was that in the ordinance, did it?
Yes, mhm, that was never any change, any changes.
Yeah, and I hadn't particularly noticed that before, and I'm wondering, it's not necessarily the duties, it's just the wording, I guess, but we're going through this change by ordinance, and our, a lot of our duties of our various committees, commissions, boards, and so forth, can we change their duties just by resolution at any point in time?
I think so. Well, actually, we're changing, we're, well, we're actually changing it by ordinance.
Well, we're changing, yeah, we're changing the.
You're changing the length.
The language of the, of the ordinance by ordinance.
Right, and that's what you do. If the duties are created by ordinance, you would change by ordinance. If the duties are created by motions or resolutions, then you can, you can change them by the same.
So, we must have had, because this has been in since day one, but we must have did that in case there was something that we wanted to have additional duties for the Human Relations Commission, that that could just be done by resolution only? Is that what it?
You're right, if they, if you decided you wanted them to.
Yeah, I'm surprised that they didn't notice that, and if they're running, I don't use the word complain, but have a discussion about something in the ordinance, I'm surprised they didn't pick up on that.
Mhm.
It looks like we just put them out of business by resolution.
But it'd have to have public notice, it says, too, on it. Marilyn, do you remember at all if this ever came up in any other meetings over the years?
I don't remember any discussion of that at all.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
Well, that's letting dogs lie. Well, the other thing is you can look at the last, second to the last sentence of, no, I'm aware of that, but if you look, second to the last sentence of 2.25.030, it says all members of the Human Relations Commission shall serve at the pleasure of the council, so, again, I don't, I don't think it's unique to the Human Relations Commission, I think a lot of the committees and so forth have the same language, and you probably could abolish them unless they're required by law, like Planning Commission or something like that. I don't think it's unique to this committee, the way.
Because I think that, oh, it's been a while ago, that there was a question about the Airport Commission as to, you know, who can be on it and what their duties were, because we had a little bit of a fray about it, and so I think it's, can be done on any of our committees, from what I could gather.
I just noticed that tonight, I was kind of surprised.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, next, council, you just have a couple items on the consent calendar, so if there isn't any that needs to be pulled off, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, consent, calendar is written. Second?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, next is a word of bid, and this must be Chris's item.
Yes, Mayor, so, this is before you because we are trying to become more efficient in how we do some of our routine supply purchases, so this is a multiple-year contract for procurement of meter boxes and lids, in particular for the water distribution work group, and there's a memo from Diane Merzinski, she managed the procurement process, and typically in the past, we've purchased these items just as we needed them annually through, through the fiscal year, so this hopefully will allow us to get some cost savings and, at the very least, save staff time in going out and individually processing and paying for these things on a case-by-case basis.
Question, are those going to be delivered to the city, or do you have to go pick them up?
I think they get delivered. I'm not, yeah, I think they get delivered, but I'm not 100% sure, I can find out.
I'm just curious. I used to buy these, and these are very good prices, so.
Yeah.
I was amazed they could even make money at that price.
Yeah, it's sort of a guaranteed, you know, procurement, so it's, it's probably incentive for them.
Thank you.
Hey, just a question, Chris, the companies that bid for it are from our area, any of them local, or are they all outside of the area, or where are they from?
Sure, and I was mistaken earlier, so HD Fowler was the lowest bid, and they're in Eugene, I think is their, their local shop. Ferguson has a business here, it's, they're, most of these are regional or national companies, and Ferguson has a business here, it's actually in Tangent, but on Pacific, we do a lot of business with Ferguson as well, but HD Fowler, I think their closest shop is in Eugene.
Okay, it's always nice to see if, you know, local organizations can.
Sure.
Achieve the winning bid, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Hey, Dick.
Yeah, one of my constituents asked me, are all these meters going to be installed in the sidewalk? Tear up the trunk of sidewalk and put them in, put a new.
That's typically where we install them, the engineering has specifications about where they go and, and where there are sidewalks, the meters typically go in the sidewalks.
And I said, I didn't know that mine was replaced, they just replaced it in the strip between the sidewalk and the curb.
Oh.
Which was, seems like it was recent, but.
Yeah, I think.
Time flies, it may have been a couple, three years.
Yeah, the new developments are typically installed in the sidewalk, typically along property lines, so they'll be two close together, and, you know, two houses and the next two houses, it's typically how they're done these days.
So that's the process, not is to put them in the sidewalk?
Yes.
Thank you.
So will these be the, the type of meters then that can be subject to freezing like we had last year?
Oh, these are just the meter boxes, is in this contract. All meters, I think, are subject to freezing, and, you know, if, if the weather's cold enough, and in places where it's really cold, they put the meters inside the structures often, which luckily, we don't have to do here. So, you know, yes, I guess, meters can freeze.
Yeah, because mine did, mine did last year. Yeah, and I'd been in my house for 40 years, and it never froze, and a couple years ago, they changed it to the, the new one.
The plastic ones?
Yeah, yeah, and I didn't have any water one morning, so, and I went all day till Steve got home, and I had him go underneath the house to try to see, well, what's wrong with it, the poor guy, cold weather under the house, and it was just the, the meter box.
Meter on the sidewalk, yeah.
So, yeah, my husband wasn't too happy that I didn't check that out, so alls I did was take a air dryer out there and, you know, got it thawed out, but.
And kettle the hot water.
Yeah, yeah, so, I will make sure if we have a freeze this year, I'll be wrapping up that, those pipes, so.
So were you in that house in 1970?
Yeah, actually '77, so we've been in our house for years.
Earlier than that, that.
Yeah.
When we had the sewer pipe that was outside the house, froze, had water dripping into the bathtub, so those pipes wouldn't freeze. Like, I'm worried, here's a bathtub half-full of water, and of course, I can reach out to the window and pour hot water on it.
Yeah.
Thaw the sewer pipe.
So I'll make a motion, we approve the resolution authorizing the contract with HD Fowler. Second?
Okay, all right, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And business from the council, Ray, you look really lonely down there today.
I did take a shower, you know.
And you're actually the odd one. All of a sudden, we noticed, we all dressed on this side of the dais in the same color, and you're an odd color.
Somebody's got to be iconoclastic, I guess.
Ray still thinks it's summer, must be the mutton chops keeping him warm or something.
A red tone, you're in the blue tone, all the way down.
Well, they're kind of blue on that side.
Yeah. Okay, did you have anything?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay, all right, Bessie?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, all right, Bill?
No.
Nope, Dick?
We seem to be getting along quite well tonight, for some reason.
We're all wearing red.
Well, that must be the trick.
It must be it. We're matching, anything?
No.
Nope, okay, and I didn't have anything, Peter?
Yeah, a few things, and I note that I'm wearing purple, which seems.
Yeah. Good combination.
So I wanted to note what, something that I had sent you an email about yesterday.
We have a fire engine deployed to California with about seven firefighters. And I have several friends that live down in that area, one of whom tells me that 95% of his neighborhood has been destroyed by this fire. And that it looks like the site of a nuclear weapon detonation. So I'm glad that we can help out along with our neighboring cities. I wanted to point out also that the young Southeast Asian leaders that we're hosting, two of them, one from Vietnam, one from Japan, will be arriving on Saturday evening. That's Mrs. Alexis Abetria from the Philippines and Ms. Yen Vu from Vietnam. And they'll both be attending council work session on the 23rd and then a regular session on the 25th. And we have a fairly lengthy agenda for them to follow while they're here and try to glean as much about local government in the United States that they can. I did want to also point out that the celebration of Katie Nusha's life will be tomorrow from 11 to 2. It's kind of an informal celebration, and to the extent that there's a formal part of it, it'll start at noon tomorrow. Today, and I was gonna, I was trying to save this news for Stuart to give to you. He wanted to tell you that he's away at a Boy Scout meeting in Lebanon. He will be here shortly, but we can't wait any longer. And that is that today is the day, I guess, that we receive $185,000 in marijuana tax revenues that we're recommending be put into Police Equipment Replacement Fund. And then finally, just note that Jorge and I will be gone the week of the 23rd. I'll just be gone the 23rd, which is a work session, and back for that week's regular session. Jorge will be out for the week down in San Antonio for the ICMA conference. That's all there.
With the marijuana tax, what was the time? Was that, was that for a year and a half then?
That's from January to June, if I recollect correctly.
Six months.
Yeah.
But it should be for the year before, I think, too. We never-
Yeah. And if Stuart were here, he could comment extensively on that. It's the first allocation of those funds, which I understand are, eventually they're going to have to all be dedicated to law enforcement needs or expenditures. So this is why we would recommend-
Is that a state rule?
Pardon me?
Is that a state rule that has to go along first?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
That's correct. I have a question about those fires in California. I have a hard time seeing municipality just burn down like that. Are there fire departments kind of catch as catch can?
No, I think, I think that the damage, the extent of the damage was caused by the pretty fierce winds that they had. And I've heard that they were hurricane force winds. And John Bradner will tell you that this is unprecedented, that California would ask for help. But they've asked for help from, in the form of 50 engines from Oregon and 50 from, I think, from Arizona as well. So that's never, to his knowledge, that's never happened before.
And I think, was it considered the Santa Ana winds?
Yes.
Yeah, and if you've ever been around the Santa Ana winds, it's just this hot wind that's a constant.
It comes from, from the desert. It comes from the east rather than the prevailing coastal winds, which are normal.
I'm wondering, too, if a lot of those houses may have cedar shake rows.
I'd rather-
Which are real popular, and therefore doesn't rain much, they last a long time.
Right. Yeah, I wouldn't be able to say.
Those types of winds are amazing. I've, you know, been down in there with them, and it's just, and you get them 50 miles an hour constant, and it's such a hot wind, it can just, embers can just fly and fly. But it was like a hurricane fire that, you know, has come through. I was so sorry for those folks down there.
Yeah.
I'm really glad that we're able to assist, and we have a good team to go down for our region, so. Yeah, but, yeah, it's pretty sad. But, okay, is that it? Mr. Peter, okay, staff have anything else?
No.
So, no? Okay. And so with that, we do have Kara next week on the 18th. And then our next work session is October 23rd. Regular session is October 25th.
Ed was looking into the possibility of canceling Kara due to lack of items for the agenda.
Oh, okay, I thought we were going to take the tour. We were planning on taking the tour that week on that.
All right. I don't think he's, yeah, we'll double check. I don't think he's canceled it yet. He was looking into it.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we told the care board last time on that. Okay.
I do have a question. Same question I asked that Monday. Are we running our turbine at the water plant at all now?
I got your question through the grapevine. And no, the generator's not running. The city of Lebanon, I always want to say Millersburg. The city of Lebanon is constructing the raw water line for their new water treatment plant. They're boring under the canal right now. So we have the water in the canal low in order to help them de-water it for their construction project. So we could be running it. The flow in the river is high enough that we could be running hydro power, but we are keeping the flow into the canal low to help with Lebanon.
I took a walk down to Bryant Park, it was Monday, and seemed to be a lot of water just dumping into the county.
Yeah, and, you know, that just varies. If, if the water treatment plant isn't running, then it just sort of flows right out. And it's, it runs every day, but not all day every day, so just depends.
So it just raised the question in my mind. I've had, I've had some of my constituents ask, too, about whether it's running.
Not, not right now, no. Hopefully within a few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
And in two weeks, you said the level will be back up for the canal? It's just-
That's the plan. And, you know, it's construction, so they've run into some hiccups, but, and they were supposed to have already been done with this portion, but they're not. So hopefully by the end of the month, that's, that's what we'll be looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Sorry to interrupt, I asked earlier.
No problem. Good question. Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you both.